Good, all right.
Good.
Welcome, everybody, to tonight's City of Tumwater Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 9th, 2025. Just after seven, and we're called to order. I'll through the roll call. Commissioner Daniel is excused. Commissioner Edwards?
Here.
Mr. Kurt Patrick?
Here.
Commissioner Kotek?
I'm here.
Great. Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Here.
And me, Commissioner Robbins. Hey, we're all here. Ooh, except for, except for Commissioners. All righty, let's go on to, are there any changes to our agenda tonight from anybody? I'll just note that for our next item approval of minutes that I didn't find minutes for September 24th, 2024, or for October 8th, 2024, so we will only be taking action on November 12th, 2024. All right, that's the only change I've got. Okay, so approval of minutes. Anybody want to make a motion or discuss the draft planning commission minutes from November 12th, 2024?
Motion to approve the minutes from November 12th, 2024.
Great, thank you.
I'll second.
Great, two seconds, we're good. All right, moved and seconded to adopt our planning commission minutes from November 12th, 2024. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Great. Any opposed? All right, minutes are approved for November 12th, 2024. Thank you. Let's go on to Commissioner report. Anybody have anything you want to talk about, bring to our attention, doing or seeing?
Well, I just wanted to compliment Erica for the presentation she made at the City Council that got printed in the Olympian, and it sounded like they really understood what you said, and it looked good.
Water Valley Golf Course just secured a three-year tour of, I think it's youth golfers. So that's really good for Tumwater. It was between Tumwater Golf Course and its golf course. So kudos to Tumwater. And the next three years that'd be posted.
All right. Anybody else? Let's go to Managers' Report. Do we need to wait for Brad to do that? So we'll, okay, another change, scoot that down. If he's able to join us, we'll move Directors' Report to later on in our agenda, after eight or nine. Okay, let's go to Public Comment. We have anybody online or on the phone? Did anybody hear from anybody in the meanwhile?
Staff have not received public comment.
Anybody here?
We have us and Commissioner Kotek and Commissioner Edwards, so no.
All right. All righty, we'll move on then. Let's go to our eighth order of business, our Food System Plan and Resolution Number R2025-015. I think it's to at a public hearing date.
Yes, thank you.
Does anyone want to start?
Sure, I'll just do a quick introduction. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for giving us some space and time to present to you tonight. We brought back the lovely Rebecca Potasnick, who has provided us with such great information regarding our food system, and now has completed the Food System Plan, it is in your packet. And besides that, discussing the Food System Plan, the goals and policies there within, and now the action items, you know, we want to talk about the questions in your packet, but then also are asking, are here tonight to ask for, to set a date for a public hearing. So if you feel like the packet is ready, then we'd like to, like to do that.
Any discussion? Think the proposal is it'll be for our next meeting?
Yes, the 23rd. And you are welcome to hear the presentation before you make an act.
I had no comments on the presentation. I think it was very well done, and stuff that we were given, or gave, were taken, so thank you.
I think the plan is excellent. My concern is hearing that we just originally have enough land in, in the city limits and even including the urban growth area, Tumwater, to meet the population increase coming as part of this operation. Yet, we propose many, many times in here of finding farmland within those borders, setting it aside, trading with the county, or doing all these other things. I know we're allowed to have conflicting things within the comprehensive plan. This is violently conflicting. Where is there a look in here to go find out how we can get some more land and add it to the city as part of our urban growth area? I mean, that's, the two things are not going to happen. Can't just close our eyes, say, well, we're going to say nice things here and nice things there. We ought, we ought to take, pick up the, the issue and address it. And we don't have to address it as planned, I think the plan's excellent. Somewhere else in the comprehensive plan, we need to address the fact that we have said, oh, we've got plenty of land. And we don't.
I think that's a really good point. I wonder, I wonder if it is appropriate to have, have that as part of the land use element. But clearly, there needs to be a link or cross, maybe cross-reference to land for agricultural purposes within city limits or at least urban.
And is there a way that maybe it's smaller plots of land and not these larger plots of land that could be used? Because is the limiting factor 30 acres right now?
Thirty.
Thirty acres?
Oh, sorry, it doesn't, anything up to 30 acres.
Up to 30.
Yeah, not, it has to be 30 acres or greater.
Anything up to 30 acres can be considered. But I mean, looking at it different, different ways, making sure that people that currently have this land are not being pressured to turn it into residential when we have very limited land. I agree with you completely. I mean, going back to Bushbury Farms, they have five acres there that they can do a little bit with, but they can't do a lot with it. And then there's all the acreage right next door that's all for govor habitat and remediation land for coffee. That used to be land that was wheat and harvestable, all the 600 acres that they used up. It is all now houses or other. So what, what can we do? I think it's a good question, right?
Yep. I think we have an impossible conflict within the coffee plant to eat both the proposed population growth and to even begin to do the good things that are suggested in this plan.
And agritourism is now the, the driving factor for a lot of these farmers, where they make more money agritourism, and, but they're not producing food on that land. They're turning it into corn mazes and different things like that, because that's what earns them the profits. And it's bad, because they should, could be growing good produce and other things that we could do, but the money's just not there for that.
I seem to recall that not too many months ago, maybe in the spring, when we had a joint meeting with council, that Brad mentioned that, that we do indeed have already presumably sufficient land within the city limits, not the urban growth area, but within the city limits, to accommodate the anticipated population growth. So that's one datum, I guess we ought to confirm that. There's sufficient land for the amount of population we are coming to Tumwater over the planning horizon of 20 years or so. What we don't necessarily know for the conflict is whether there is, we're somehow double counting land that could be used for agricultural purposes, or whether indeed there's something, you know, sufficient for both purposes, for both uses. That's something that we need to figure out.
Right.
From what I understand. I mean, if, so the one point I think has been made, that we do have enough for population, provided there's, they're willing to build that housing or.
Including the UGA, that, that boundary is set, that it is, it's sufficient space for growth. That's the definition of that boundary, essentially. So with, given that, and given that, you know, through the land use data that we presented a couple weeks, a couple months ago now, that we are on a thin margin for providing houses in certain income brackets, all right? And so we increased the density of some areas, so we wouldn't have to spill out into more land, so that we could do some of these, these lab preservation things, and meet our HCP, and these other things we can anticipate coming. So if, if we didn't increase density and we allowed residential areas to spill out into some of these other places, then it would be in tighter conflict, I, I think, than we, than we have. We've tried to create ourselves the situation where we have a little less conflict because of increasing the density in the urban, the more densely urban populated areas, in those high-density and medium-density residential areas. Does that help?
Well, I hear it, but I don't know if we have any control over it. Is you're going to vacate all applicants for single-family homes, or something like that? And I can't see the city doing that.
Well, we have, the minimum density standards are going to stay. I mean, the minimum, the minimum density standards are going to stick. So the minimum density standards rose in those areas. So even before, when we had 10 homes per, and, you know, I'd have to look at the numbers to know.
Or we didn't have minimum at all.
We had.
We said, we said it was four to nine.
Yeah.
There was no minimum, there was only a maximum. You could build one house per acre. And it's only within the last 10 years that we set a minimum of four.
And there's subdividing. So if you own a parcel, you are allowed to build a single-family residence on it. And if you go through the subdivision process, that's where you have to meet density and the units per acre. It is, it's hard, because the lower density, the RSR, Residential Sensive Resource Area, where a lot of our habitats are, probably prairies, stuff like that, that is the RSR with the lower density. But it is a balancing act. We can't control the private market without having unintentional take of property, which we talked about. And who, and what we're doing with this comprehensive plan is we're not saying all this housing is going to be built right away. It's just planning for it, and making sure we're zoned appropriately. Because, yeah, we are limited on what we can and can't control. That's the issue, for the jurisdiction. It's hard.
It seems to me that you want this agricultural land, small plots of it, not out in the county. You want them here in the city, where they will benefit the city. Really what you need to do, you need to designate, maybe zone, areas of the city purely for agricultural use, and then go back to the county and say, now that we've done this, we don't have enough land to put the new people that are coming in, and we're going to have to expand the urban growth area.
I think the intention with this plan is not necessarily to create a single use for agriculture, but to allow some of the current uses to expand to allow agriculture. So where we see, where we see things like parks and green space, or even lawns, converting those spaces, or, or a, an encouragement of creating those spaces. Some of those spaces are private, so we don't have direct influence over them, but some of those places are public. And we have some green space that is public, that could be converted into potential, oh, how do we?
Crosts or gardens or what?
Community garden.
Community garden space.
Well, isn't light industrial able to be used as agriculture?
As far as I remember, if that's correct.
It is confusing to me, though, to have light industrial, but somebody say, oh, I can make agriculture, or I can grow crops, or I can do something like that, within not being kind of called out, like this is a use, a good use of this, if somebody would like.
We don't want to limit people's potential use. I mean, people are growing things in containers, especially, you know, mushroom farms in containers, or something that, you know, has been done in other areas. More of the kind of hydroponic type of operations can be done, using technology and lights and things like that, so.
The one thing I did, I went on to farm my plot, or was trying to find sites where you could, and you.
Farm my yard.
Farm my yard. And I found nothing for our area.
Yeah.
So there's sites out there where you can farm my yard, you can do all these different things, but there's nobody in this area using it.
Well, in my, in my understanding, is that farm my yard is a program that Tumwater is not currently participating in. And so I feel like that's like part of, one of the things that are called out in here, that it's a program that exists, that the county supports, that the City of Olympia has adopted, and it's a place, I guess I feel like some of the things y'all are talking about, I totally hear what you're saying, because another hat that I wear is that I'm involved with the Thurston Housing Land Trust, so I'm very much about what you're talking about and providing housing for folks. I think it, a little bit of this, too, is thinking about, almost like we think about infill development with housing, is a little bit about like infill development with agricultural opportunities. And I think sometimes when we use the term agriculture, we think like, oh, like a big farm. But if we think about agriculture as everything from, like you're saying of like a pea patch, you know, just like taking advantage of, encouraging people, and removing barriers, like what are the things the city can do and remove barriers, so that if someone is interested in doing some kind of like infill agriculture, that that exists. I think.
Well, then tackling HOAs is the next thing. Because I would love to turn my front yard into anything other than green grass, and they find me.
Right.
So I literally tried, and I went to them, and they're like, no, you can't do it. I was like, this is crazy.
And I'll say, and that was called out in the, in the report. And I'll say that the language got softened a bit when, when the legal review happened. And I will mention to you all that there is, at the state level, state law, that says HOAs cannot do certain things about climate-resistant landscaping. And so there is a way that if Tumwater was to engage in state advocacy efforts, something could be put into place that says HOAs cannot limit home food production.
I would like to say, Food System Plan is not necessarily a development code change, it's not a permitted use necessarily. It is a catalyst to help encourage, support, promote these uses, like we were talking about infill development, more residentially, and also provide an opportunity. I think this, if I'm remembering correctly, came about because the community wanted like local farm stands, food banks, the opportunity to share resources with the community. And we didn't really have a method for that, a way to have that, or a permitted way to have that. So just kind of like our Housing Action Plan helps guide usage development code. This will be a catalyst to help future policy recommendations and changes.
I want to clarify just a little bit. These policies, goals and policies will be, are, there, excuse me. There's language in our land use and conservation element that, that points to this plan, that these goals and policies will be adopted as goals and policies of the, so having the same, having the same weight and level of the comprehensive plan. And the draft implementation actions, just, and these opportunities are at the same level as well, where they will be brought into the work program. So when we think about the work program items, it's because we don't have the information yet, and, and five years from now, the information could change. So then, when council decides that this is a priority, and we have funding to work on this item or that item, and whichever item they think is for first and best, and all those things at the time, then, then we put it into our work item, and then we can engage in a study. And we can see, okay, so we want to tackle HOAs, how do we legally do that? What are the steps that we need to do to do that? And that staff's work to uncover that, that potential opportunity.
And I think we just didn't want to miss the opportunity right here to bring up some of these certain topics, like the big part, that we completely agree, so thank you.
Commissioner Nelson?
I think my, my question got answered. As I read all of this today, I thought, who's going to do the work? And that was my question. And I think the answer is, if this, this exists, and as part of the whole overall management plan that's been put together, if the city council provides that, you know, what, we really need to take some action on this.
If it didn't exist, then they'd have to take all that time.
Yeah, yeah. But I would hope that if a group came to city council, or came to staff and said, you know, we want to do something, there's a group that actually wants to do something, that then this allows you to do a little bit.
I would hope so.
I'm sure. I think that's why this started, really, was a pressure like a TV.
This is very much council-led, community-led work. This isn't something we're mandated to do from the state. So that really shifts the focus from everything we've been doing in the coffee plant, to meet state mandates. And so it, it's a very different, very different look.
We appreciate this, because that was one of my feedback pieces from last year when we did it, is great to do something that's not just here's the state coming down and asking us to do this, putting the right foot forward and doing what we should be doing.
Let me make sure that those on Zoom have a chance, have any thoughts. Commissioner Edwards, Commissioner.
I don't have any thoughts. I do like what Brandon just said about that it is just something additional that we're doing, because we should be doing it, not that we have to, and I love that.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Edwards, anything? All right. So do folks want to hear the presentation? Do you want to go ahead and move to set a hearing?
I'm comfortable moving to set the hearing.
Me too.
Motion to set the hearing for September 23rd.
Any second it? Been moved and seconded to schedule a public hearing for our Food System Plan, for our next meeting, September 23rd, 2025. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor of scheduling a public hearing for September 23rd, 2025, on the Food System Plan? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're set. Motion passes.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you for all, thank you for your work.
Absolutely. It's, I was, you know, rereading things before the meeting again, and I was like, so pleased with you all for doing this.
Now, this is great work, we're very, very tired of this.
It's really outstanding. Yeah. And I feel like, for me saying that, because I feel like I was a little bit just like the conduit for gathering what the community, you know, wanted to put in there. And I feel very like, it's something I hope that you all, as representatives of the municipality, are really proud of. It's very outstanding work.
Thank you.
Mr. Kurt?
Since we are going to have a presentation, I'd just like to tell a story. I visited a town in Australia called Adelaide, and Adelaide is probably, oh, twice the size of Tumwater, so it's not a small town. But when the city was laid out, the center core of the city was laid out, and then about a mile circle around the entire city was laid out for gardens and parks. And then the city limits extended several miles out beyond that circle. So that you've got development here and housing, you've got development and housing out there. And in the middle, where the people can get to it from both sides, are areas for small, small-scale farming, and for parks, and for everything else. But that's called city planning. Not waiting for what the developers are going to do.
Do you happen to recall when Adelaide was founded? Do you happen to recall when Adelaide was founded?
I'm not sure Adelaide was there in the 1700s. But I doubt if that happened in that generation.
Well, I think that's a great comment, because, I mean, we were founded back in the 1850s, and we had sizable plots of land that just kept getting cannibalized.
Governmental structures, however.
So, but that's great, I love that.
So that was my idea earlier, of instead of waiting for this to happen, that we coordinate with the county, to say, we would like to move our city limits out to here, and use some of this land that's around the current periphery of Tumwater, which is 800, how many, however many people we expect in the next 20 years. That, that many people less, let them build out there in that outer circle, and, and use this land in here for these kinds of purposes that are laid out in this plan.
We have some good spots of land out there in that periphery that would be good for that. Thank you.
We don't have to fill up.
Okay, yoke. Let's move on to item number nine, our 2025 comprehensive plan.
All right, that's all, more comprehensive plan stuff.
All right. Five, or do you want to?
If you hold me out in five, I would really appreciate that. Some reason whenever I click, it always skips while it's about, so.
Okay, thank you.
You don't have to please if you don't want to.
Okay.
You can go, you can stay whenever you want.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I am presenting to you our plan introduction, and then talking about our schedule moving forward with the comprehensive plan update. It's hard to believe that December 31st is coming up, creeping up quite fast. So we're in the final stretch with the comprehensive plan update process, instead of pretty two years. This is a separate document. So we're going to go over what is a plan introduction, and discuss the ordinance and our adoption schedule. I did want to let you guys know that the plan introduction is a separate document. It's almost like the user guide or an appendice, appendices, like it is a document that lays out the foundation of the comprehensive plan, and then there's also the overall plan goals, and then how it relates to Thurston County wide planning policies, and then, of course, the adoption ordinance. So it's two chapters and two appendices, appendices. Chapter one, foundation of the plan. This is the who, what, when, where, and why of the comprehensive plan. This gives all the legal background of the comprehensive plan update and why we're doing it. And then how we are, the relationship of the comprehensive plan to the city's vision, the mission and values, goals of the growth management plan, which we know by heart, right? Right now, we know those by heart. And Thurston County, Thurston County county-wide planning policies. And Thurston County, Thurston County county-wide planning policies. And then we have the plan amendment and update process, something new to this comprehensive plan update. It's going to be updated every 10 years, whereas previously with eight years. But within that 10 year, we still have that five-year review, like our check-in with the state. And then our public participation, it is a requirement that we document our public participation throughout the update process. And then talking about how we worked intergovernmental coordination, how we worked with the other jurisdictions, the counties, Ollin County. Not quite so much young, but we did work on some house details with young as well. As well as other industry transit and such. Another part of it is the overall plan goals. So these are overarching plan goals that could be implemented or sought throughout all of the separate elements. So it's not in each element, so for housing, transportation, land use, climate, we're not repeating our overarching goals. These overarching goals are more like requirements that we need to do for each element. So there's that overarching goal. It's also incorporating some goals and policies tied in with the city's mission, the values and such. So we're just going to go over, feel free to give me, provide feedback on these goals. I will say I'm filling in for our director who wrote this element. So I will make sure he gets any of the comments on this, on the goals. But for the first one, so plan introduction, goal one, that's what PI plans for a plan introduction, continuously engages community in the region. Goal two, ensure coordination between the elements, the plans, the subarea plans of comprehensive plan. Community vibrancy, foster livability by evoking a sense of identity through arts, culture, and history and attracting and sustaining desired economic activity that supports the community by making investments that emphasize Tumwater as a wealth-based place and enhanced community building. Equity, this was a huge, this was new and a big focus for the comprehensive plan update, especially in the housing element. Ensure that all members of the community, especially those whose needs have been systematically neglected or systematically tired. Neglected as well served by making decisions and investments through an inclusive process which results in equitable outcomes.
The word there was systematically, but it could mean either or both, probably.
So we might want to use both.
I am. Blame it on me being a little naysly, so.
Okay.
I mean, how you would.
Okay, well, I guess I'm, I'll ask the question, don't we mean both? And if so, then we should probably use both words. I mean, different things.
Yes, okay. I will make sure. Great, goal five, climate resilience, increase climate resiliency by promoting sustainability, reducing pollution, promoting healthy habits, and supporting clean air and water. We have six, fiscal stewardship, make wise investments of public and private funds in community infrastructure and projects. Goal seven, protect and enhance the environment. So those are the overarching goals that should be considered for each of the elements throughout the comprehensive plan update. On this, we're going to talk about our update adoption schedule.
Is there a perfect?
Yep. I think the content of the introduction is excellent. The format gave me a headache, trying to figure out when I, when to go down and when to go right. It's, it's, you know, practically every three. Practically three times in every page, I had to stop and figure out where I'm supposed to go next. I would suggest that we just stay in one nice column on each side, the old-fashioned way, now in chapter one. Chapter two is fine that way. But but chapter one, especially when there's no hyphenated words, when the, when you've got a paragraph here and a paragraph there, you don't know whether that paragraph goes here or there. You know, after one page, it was hurting. And hopefully, we want people to read this thing and be comfortable reading it. And I found it very difficult to track my way through it.
Well, second that, I was just doing this at work where we were, had the same thing and I found myself just reading down. And then I'm like, oh, shoot, I need to go over here. And I read a couple of pages that way and I was like, this doesn't make any sense to me, so. And I agree with that.
Heard. So the content's good, it's just the format.
And for, and you can, you can switch formats in chapter two. Chapter two is fine that way where you have the the big goal set up and then the information is side-by-side paragraphs below it. But in chapter one, it's, it's, it's about, read it.
I mean.
I've got, I've got arrows and lines. All the way down.
They're quite short, so it skips over instead of going down. Yeah.
I see, okay. I will have to comment on. I'm, I'm trying to look at that.
Here's what it looks like. I got lines across here and arrows down there. I'm trying to figure out which way to go.
So maybe it's after page three.
It works well that way.
Starts on page three, underneath foundation of the plan.
It works well that way when it's really obviously clear that you have sections that are going across horizontal. But if it isn't just obvious with a good break, with a line or a visual graphic or something, we are all taught to read down and then come up and read down.
Yeah, I will say it starts to get maybe a little busy on page four.
Page three is mighty difficult as well.
Okay, okay. I am just so used to this.
Good feedback, thank you. Yeah.
Format and accessibility is huge.
Content's good. It's a format that needs to be modified.
Appreciate that. Okay, so now, this is where I will be asking for specific feedback on our next steps for the update adoption schedule. So the way that we're planning on going to the adoption is through three separate ordinances. One ordinance for the comprehensive plan amendment, which is our capital facility plan. We will talk about the capital facilities plan. We have a meeting for a briefing coming up later this month, so we will get to go over the capital facilities plan for those who might not know what that is. But that is typical that we have the departments come in and talk about the projects, the funding, where we're getting the money, the resources. There's also the, the capital facilities plan ties into our land for public purposes element and how we provide services to the community. So this is infrastructure projects, transportation projects, our water resources, conservation projects, restoration work. Yep, our utilities. So, yes, so that's going to be one ordinance. And then the second ordinance is going to be the comprehensive plan update, which is going to be the plan, the elements, the guides, the appendices, the map. That is going to be the main ordinance there. And then we have the third ordinance, which is the development code update. I think I briefed you all on the development code, so that was the religious contract housing, the middle housing, those things that are due with the comprehensive plan update by December 31st through December 55, 58. So with that being said, these ordinances will be big, it's going to be a big list. If we go to the next page. Or the capital facilities plan. We are going to start the CFP review next week. We are also submitting our notice of intent to the Department of Commerce. We will have a briefing September 23rd. You want to move in the bar? And then on October 14th, we will have a work session. October 28th will be the hearing.
We, we will need to take action to adopt that. You need that tonight? Without the schedule? Or set a public hearing?
No, no, we have it set for the 28th. So we'll have the hearing on the CSP on the 28th, October.
We don't have it set yet. They will probably set it on the October 14th.
Okay, yeah, okay. That, that's, yeah, so this is, okay. Draft, this is, yes, yeah, okay. Sorry for the, the briefing there.
You'll get a chance to see it before you have to request a hearing on it.
Yeah. Yeah, so later this month, we'll have a briefing on it. Yeah. All right. And then it will go to city council, September 18th. So city council review and consideration on the, September 18th, it's going to the public work committee. November 12th, our GDC, the general government state briefing. November 25th, council will have a work session. And December 2nd, a consideration. They're all those.
And somewhere shortly thereafter, they have to adopt it to meet the 31st, December 31st.
But consideration is adoption.
Off, thank you.
Consideration is consideration for adoption.
Commissioner Kirk.
Okay, November 25th is a Tuesday, which is a normal work session. You have on November 24th, a joint city council and planning commission meeting. So on Monday, on Monday, are we going to meet together right before that work session?
I noticed that as well.
Is it a special meeting?
It's in red, so it must be something special.
Were you saying November 24th?
On page, page 113 or 17?
It's under B3.
I would imagine it's a typo.
Yeah, so in this, in this, we're going to talk about the joint meeting on slide 17, which is planning commission review and hearing for the development code update. Let's see if it's part of the comprehensive plan. Are you in the memo or the staff? Are you in the memo?
And your briefing on page 17 in red, it says, November 24, 2025, joint city council and planning commission.
In the slide.
That's a Monday.
Slide 17, or slide 17.
And then, and then you're having, on the very next day, apparently, the city council is going to have a work session on top of that.
I think it would be a typo, let me just check. If that's a, if that's a typo, ordinarily, what happens is our joint sessions or we, we come early in order, like at 5:00, the meeting. And then later, we can have a meeting and they can have meetings. But that's going to be a question.
That's not what this said.
I know. But so, so I'm wondering if the typo is, is our joint city council meeting the very same day, 25th?
We'll have to clarify that.
Because then the next page, you have another work session on a Tuesday on January 13th.
Right. Well, yeah, we're kind of skipping ahead here, so we're talking about the three different ordinances and then the three processes for adoption for each of the different ordinances.
It also appears in the, the memo, it has, Monday, let's see, Monday, November 24th.
Maybe.
Oh, maybe that's why it's in red. Maybe it's special.
Is this a holiday?
I mean, at the end of the week.
It's a holiday week.
It's a Canadian holiday.
That Tuesday is ordinarily a work day.
Oh, later in the week.
I will have to follow up. Yeah, we will, we'll clarify.
Thank you.
Yeah, we'll, we'll further discuss that, what work session date and time.
And the fact that it appears twice makes it appear less that it's a, an accident. But it also, I would expect that you would have maybe gotten the notice about a meeting on a different day than a Tuesday.
I have not received such a notice.
It's a little early to get a, doesn't it?
Yeah, it is kind of a couple early from that.
So maybe you'll just notice. So go check it out.
I already put it in my calendar, so.
I appreciate that.
Got to go.
Double check, we'll follow up tomorrow.
Who would, who would have declared if it was kind of off-cycle, off-day?
Who would have declared?
Would that be a council can just say, planning commission, you need to.
I'm wondering if council taking off Tuesday.
They're through all the scheduling, so it may have been them, but even council usually doesn't meet on a Monday.
Yeah.
So it's.
But if you, we'll just.
He'll let us know.
Maybe I was supposed to do this 24th.
It could be.
For both of them.
Monday. Yeah.
Should we go over the next?
He'll be over here shortly.
And if we, there's enough people out, then when we have quorum, then we have a trouble.
Yeah. I think what we're trying to do is outline, so just to give an idea of what the next two months are going to look like. And also to talk about our capacity, what would be most helpful for the planning commission moving forward, what kind of content would be helpful to make a decision to go towards adoption? Because again, we have the, the capital facilities plan, we have the comprehensive plan, all the elements, appendices, maps, everything. And then we also have the development code. So we can go to the next slide. So this is just the CFP. This is talking about, yeah, given the size, the complexity of the comprehensive plan and development code update. What? What, what are the most important things that would like staff to focus on to help through discussion?
Commissioner Nelson.
Well, my, my first thought when I saw that question was, and we've, we've been going through all of this stuff, which is massive, as we all agree. In all of the meetings we've had, where are key areas that you've made significant adjustments? So I, I don't want to talk about little things. I want to talk about typos and stuff. But really, did you change a, how do I think, a strategy, for example? Did we add or change a goal, which I don't remember doing, you know? But something that was really, really significant. Because other than that, I, I don't want to have a rehash. I know we don't have time for a rehash of that whole, that whole big thing.
So you would, you would say that significant changes equal adding or changing a goal? Adding or changing a policy potentially?
Policy, thank you.
Adding or changing a map? Or is that just data? No, okay.
No, your data is your data. You went woe on the policy, Erica, is that because you already know that you changed a lot of policies?
Yeah, to me, I don't know if there was, speaking to like the housing element, and we did, there is, we do have records going through and identifying which were new goals and policies and then which were carried over and amended from the previous comprehensive plan.
Are you saying changes from the version you saw or changes from the 2016 comprehensive plan?
I was talking about from what we saw. I was not talking about the 2016.
Okay, okay.
To me, that's just there, it was done and.
Yeah.
This is now.
So how, how about how we incorporated the feedback that we received?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. That's what I briefed the city council on, is what we heard. And overall, this is what we heard, this is how we implement it, and these were the changes that we made. And that was, at least for the housing element, that was, I summarized with planning commission, what we heard from planning commission, from all of our work together, what I heard from those, in relation to the first displacement analysis report, and then what we also heard from the GDC and CFP. Also, you know, what we heard from our stakeholders in our public outreach and how those comments, questions were incorporated. So that would be helpful.
And did that go well?
No, I agree. Yeah. Um, so, okay, that's noted, yeah, so.
Anyway, that's my idea.
Yeah, that's good.
Capital facilities plan. Even when, uh, it's a redo of the previous year, or just an update of previous year, uh, we never have enough time allocated to, uh, give it a thorough review. If the city council wants us to review it, if they don't want us to do it, that's fine. But if they want us to review it, we need to be given enough time to review it, and that's particularly important when it becomes an element of the comp plan. Because we have to see that it's agreeing with all the other places that it's mentioned
Yes.
in, in the comp plan.
Yes.
I, you know, I, I suggest that we look, see if there's noon meetings that we can set up like we have in the past, uh, where we come in here at noon and somebody from staff goes through half of the, half of it with us, maybe for two. In the past, we've usually had three, uh, noon meetings, uh, and, uh, for sure, uh, before the actual briefing, which is, what, uh, September twenty-third?
Mm-hmm.
That one, like, uh, here. Uh, maybe if we could get the, uh, uh, information two weeks in advance, so we could have time to read it. Because, you know, it, it's deep, uh, to, to.
I've not seen it.
To, to get through it. Uh, first, you got the city projects.
Yeah.
Then you got the transportation projects, and then you got the water and sewer and stormwater projects.
Okay, we talked about police fires.
You, 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 and maybe even the, uh, although I bet you you don't have it yet, uh, the schools, um, capital plan, because we're supposed to review that as well.
You know, as part of the land for public purposes element, I reviewed the most relevant plan at that time, for the water school district.
Commissioner Kirkpatrick, I do want to point out that we're not going to a work session with the full council until November twenty-fifth. Yes, we're gonna be at the public works committee and the general government committee before then, but those are subcommittees, sub-council. And so we do have two meetings, September twenty-third and October fourteenth, um, that happened before then.
We hit the one work session. In other words, the, the briefing, which can't be done in two hours, is scheduled for the twenty-third.
Sure.
There's one work session scheduled for the fourteenth, and then there's a hearing scheduled for the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
So you're saying.
You're not gonna get a useful product out of us on that schedule.
So previously, in the past, we've had noon meetings where prior to the briefing even, you've had a chance to meet with staff in the departments to discuss projects.
Yeah.
Okay, and that's prior to the briefing?
And, and that's usually the people that are in charge of the capital facilities plan, are the people that make the briefing. It was the, the people that actually wrote it.
Yes.
Uh, that, that's who comes in.
Transportation director.
The, the city administrator usually comes in for the city portion of it. Uh, the, uh, uh, water and sewer people come in for that portion of it, uh, and, uh, transportation people come in for their portion of it. In other words, the people that can a- actually answer the questions and, uh, explain why, well, we just forgot to update that. Uh, yeah, which is usually the answer. Um, but that's really, that's really the function that we're providing, is we're practically proofreading that before the city council gets it.
And, and just to have that face-to-face in, like, immediate answer from the, the people, from the horse's mouth.
That's what we've done in the past.
Okay. I.
We didn't do that.
This, this schedule is much too tight.
Yeah. Yeah, but I see how it would be really important with the, the comprehensive plan update.
I, I really a- agree with that opportunity. I'm, I'm mindful, however, of, um, imposing a burden on members who may not be able to make all of those.
Well, I'm not, not saying that everybody has to come.
Yeah, okay, so it might be a little voluntary briefing. And then it may be that if, if everybody shows up, though, I wonder if we get sideways with public meetings.
Yes.
Uh, open requirement.
Well, if we set it up like a special meeting, then we're not sideways with OPMA.
Okay.
Then it is a special meeting, and it's open to the public, and it's in this room, and we can even zoom it.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, but we'll have to, um, the trickier sometimes part is scheduling. And I know noon sounds good for some people, and it's not necessarily this staff. Uh, sometimes our directors, um, would have some trick with that, I'm sure they try to make themselves available to you as a commission. Um, but then the commissioners, I'm, and, and scheduling that all at the same time can be, can be tricky, but.
We normally, we normally just use the room back in, in, in headquarters, that one room with one table in it?
Yeah, well, well, yeah, we'll discuss with the director and then, how many.
And this doesn't require a quorum, right? It's just a, a briefing?
Well, if there, if, if, if enough of us that would make a quorum show up at the same time, then I think de facto that's considered.
That's a meeting, yeah.
Cross purposes with not having advertised it or made it open and so on. So, um, so in order to circumvent that, that potential thing, staff would have to go ahead and alert people that there's gonna be a briefing and it's open, just in case four of us show up all at the same time.
Unless it's a subcommittee.
Unless it's a special subcommittee meeting or something, but then that, that means that not everybody gets to hear it.
Mm.
Okay, and maybe not everybody wants to hear it. You know, maybe not everybody shows up for the briefing, but, you know, I guess I, I wouldn't want to get us, like I say.
Exactly.
I'd way to it, though. Public meetings require.
So I do hear the comment that you were thinking that we will rush through the CFP and not have enough time to really review.
Yep.
Yeah, because also on the twenty-third, we have other things going on.
Right, we have our, our public hearing on.
Public hearing, so I.
Essentially gonna take a little time.
Yeah, so I mean, I'm fully on board with this, and I think however we, your application to happen, make it happen.
Yeah.
And also I think it shows the city that we are very serious about this as a commission.
Correct, yeah.
Anything, uh, back to question number one, uh, for the develop, for the comprehensive plan and development code update?
Um, yeah, I, wherever possible, uh, try to emphasize, you know, kind of, what's the consequence? What's at stake? Why is it important? Um, if possible, you know, who, who's affected? Um, and if there's, it just may, did you be some cost to, um, note that? It may be an estimate or a ballpark cost, and who bears the cost? Is it the city cost? Is it property owners, is it developers, blah, 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 that kind of thing? I think is, you know, the, you know, make it important to people. Um, so I realize there's a, you know, it's a, it's a bureaucratic thing to even undergo the comp plan. If we can diminish just the procedural stuff, get to the importance of what we're doing. Why, why? Why, that's the stage, it's the framework, it's the vision, you know, like, I said, the GMA. Yeah, correct, I mean, the GMA is why, why we have to do it, but it's the process, you know, we're ticking the box, but, you know. Unless we're only ticking the box. You know, um, you know, there's a reason why we're doing that. All this stuff is to help set our, you know, our, our future path, or more likely, you know, my second point being. We haven't, we're not, we just took the first time out of the gate that we're doing this. We have a long history, what, forty years or more now, of planning here in the city of Tom Water, maybe more than that. Um, and so we're building a heck of a, on a heck of a lot of what already occurred. Um, we may have had to change, you know, direction from time to time over that interview in time, but, you know, we've, we've got a history here that we continue. We're trying to move forward.
Well, and, and something this morning that caught me, um, off-guard was a street sweeper going down my road. Um, street cleaning up the streets, and it made me think of, uh, what we talked about last meeting with the bikes and over the road and everything. I had no clue the street sweeper was coming, nobody on my street did, cars were parked out there, so even if we wanted to get in and clean, it couldn't. And then it goes down one of the areas that is overloaded with, um, debris and other stuff on the side, so it's like, this is great. However, how, how do we make people aware that this is happening at this time in this region? And it, this is not necessarily this exact question, but it's bigger, it's like, when we're looking at doing these things, how are we going to make the public aware? And then another great thing about that is making the public aware then brings in volunteers, then brings in others that are passionate about it, maybe getting a group project to go and assist with it. Um, but there is a cost associated with this, there are some different things, but how as a city are we making sure people are aware of things? And not just on Facebook, and not just on other things, but what is the tool? Um, because the streets sweep, been great, happy for it, however, my car was out there, another car was out there, because we all are getting our houses painted and other stuff, so. And it was garbage day also, so garbage day tomorrow. And so it was just, I'm like, I laughed, I'm like, this was a job that's half-done, and this costs money. And it, so it was something that upset me, because I think back to what we were talking about, and it's like, if this is trying to go down streets, or it's trying to clean up and do all these other things, it can't do its job.
It's an illustration.
Yes.
A street sweeper is an illustration.
And it was just comical to me, so, I'm like, dang it, now I have to go and clean this part of the street myself.
But how many other things are we doing with that level of communication?
Yes.
That level of.
Well, and we, we do have a communication possibility, I think of PSE, we lost power in our neighborhood a couple days ago, yet again.
I heard about that in neighborhood, or, yes.
And immediately, PSE sends out a text, I get it on my phone, just immediately, and then they're a little bit late in telling me when it's come back on, because it's like, yeah, I think I know it's come back on. But I thought, what does the city of Tom Water have? And what they have is this city water and sewer bill. So they do have contact for every household, that they could send out a notification, the street sweeper's gonna be coming through. And then hopefully, they should know when the garbage schedule is, I'm sorry.
The city, city also sends out texts, because they, they send out texts when, uh, they're gonna be streets closed.
Mm-hmm.
Do they?
So there's a system, and there's, there's, there's one in the city for you to get your name on a list and then receive.
Have to subscribe, exactly, yes.
But, but the system is there.
See, we can't do a subscription, I mean, it's good that we do that, I didn't even know I could subscribe, but, uh, they have our contact information for the, for the bill.
It should be a push notification that hears this, say, yes, I want to subscribe, but send it out to everybody at least to get that, uh, verification.
Yeah, yeah.
Our specific rules around how we can communicate with people.
Ah, of course.
How we can use their, that because of privacy act. So even if we do have your, um, address and phone number.
Phone number.
On, on your water bill, doesn't mean that we're allowed to text you about this, that, and everything about the city, even if it is, even if it seems important. It seems important to you.
Well, thanks for that reminder.
But it should be.
All you gotta do is go on the city website and volunteer, okay? Put your name on the list.
Okay, we'll look for that.
But we need to send information to people to say, here's something that you can do, and here's how to get the information. But to catch the idea, because.
Yeah.
But we, it should be something goes out in everybody's letter, or water bill, or whatever, and you put that on here, go to this website to subscribe, to get text notifications.
So for the comprehensive plan, does that tie into, like, maybe notification on our meetings, our.
I'm just trying to.
We won't, we won't make it.
I'm just trying to tie it in. I think, I think, um, what you might be trying to say is there's some outreach that here in, here in our introductory document, there's a chance for people to, or any and all of it, is that, you know, can we, can we get even better at our outreach? Oh, definitely, okay. So, so that people know what, there's always gonna be those who, you know, move to, move to town after, you know, we've already taken action and don't know about whatever, plus.
Yeah.
Everybody has, you know, a little fawn, or whatever, everybody's on the water system, and all that kind of stuff. But nevertheless, you know, getting better and better, I think, at letting people know what's coming. I think, you know, I should have scheduled for what kinds of things we're gonna be working on. As a planning commission, I'm sure council has that too. Um, I don't know how much traffic those things get, but, you know, calendars, actions, and topics, I think is important.
That was an overarching goal within the document, with communication.
And to me, it goes back to the fiscally responsible, I mean, what you were talking about in tenants, and, okay, it's not fiscally responsible to have to a job. And literally, you have this guy driving around, they don't care what, they're gonna go and do whatever. And if you ask them, how many cars did you pass? How, how much of the street did you actually hit? They probably go, I missed a whole bunch of it. And I mean, with my job in particular, they're shutting down Marine Drive right now in Olympia, and the city didn't even know about some of the stuff. So like, it's the port dealing with things for the city, and it's like, here's this cross piece that's not being handled, and I don't want that to start happening here in Tom Water, since we're doubling in size, and we're doing all this good work, and we're doing all these things. We're putting in, uh, peanuts and roundabouts and stuff like that, and it's like, those, those are great, yeah, the, the.
I thought, round.
Um, but, but all of that is good communication, but I want to do it right the first time, and I don't want to spend money. Going down towards, uh, um, bo- uh, serendipity where we drop our child off on, I think it's Crosby, where they butchered that road, and then I go back and redo it. That's double work that I'm sure the city has to pay for. So that is the stuff that gets me riled up as a, a person that lives here in Tom Water and will for the rest of my life. And I know that other people in the city get upset about that too. So whenever I see work that's poorly done, I, I'm going to speak out about it. And that, and that to me is kind of one of these tenants, and making sure that we're, we're utilizing the funds that we have, and if we can wrap that into the comp plan.
Yeah.
And make sure that we think about those sort of things, and communication is really big.
Yeah, thank, thank you for tying that together. I was still on, like, question one, so I was like, okay, well, hopefully that's with our next meeting, but.
You're right, totally relevant to the overarching goal of fiscal responsibility, communication.
So thank you, I just wanted to make sure I incorporated that feedback correctly. I'm just just like, I don't know if I have time to really get that together.
Well, it did feel like it kind of rolled around there.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you, I just, I needed to get brought back to you. Um, okay, so for number one, what I'm hearing is we'd rather talk about what we heard, how we incorporated it, major changes since we've done all the initial briefing, work sessions on the elements, maybe summarize the, the final changes. And then also, we want to talk about, um.
Why?
Try to emphasize the consequences, what's at stake, and who's affected, the cost of why it's important. Okay, yeah, okay. That seems doable.
But getting back to the story.
Yeah.
Really, making it personal, personalizing it.
I'd probably start with that story first, and then go into what you've heard and, you know.
Right. Yeah, I like that, I, I hope that's almost what the user guide is gonna be like, you know, this is.
This is all about.
Right.
Why is it important? I always appreciate, Elizabeth, when you bring us back to that.
We, we do know when the fire engine's coming around at Christmas.
Yes, we do, we do, actually.
So the ci- the city has, has, has communication.
Yes, we have a beautiful map in Sparta, I agree, so there we go.
Yeah, and I'm gonna give question number two here, some, some thoughts, some considerations. Uh, this is asking about our joint work session of the city council. Is there any specific areas, topics that we would like to have the focus for our discussion?
Is this about the, um.
Content?
Plan, comp plan intro document?
Or is it broad? This is broad, this is gonna be the update portion of it.
This is about the ordinances, how we want to go about the actual adoption process for everything. This isn't really related to the plan introduction, this is everything.
But what, for me, uh, what I think is, is helpful is, um, maybe, maybe there's a way ahead of time for us to get, um, a re- a mi- a reminder of the council's strategic goals. Um, so that, you know, because it, for me, these opportunities for the joint session is, you know, a chance to make sure we are in alignment with, and I don't mean lockstep, because sometimes, you know, we're gonna explore ideas so that council has the benefit of these, um, uh, divergent thinking and conversation and so on, but, but I, I want to make sure that we are reminded about where they're trying to head. And they, you know, they've gone off on their retreat and crafted their strategic plan and so on, but, you know, I don't necessarily know the guts of that. And so having that in advance, being able then to use the time of the meeting. Self to already be trying to think, okay, are the things we're working on helping advance their objectives?
You know, so where are we headed and what is, what is the vision?
What are, what about after the comp plan? How are we going to use these elements?
How does everything tie together? Really, you know, we're probably going to see, we have some interesting times ahead with our joint sessions going forward.
Well, I agree with that. And the other thing is that if there are significant areas within the comp plan update where there are significant update conflicts, maybe we, maybe we won't, maybe we won't, might want to take a look at those so that both the city council and the planning commission can discuss, can discuss among themselves. You know, you know, here, here are things that we want to do this and we want to do that. And they aren't both going to happen in the next 20 years. We can't expect that we're going to get a hundred percent of what we plan to do in the next 20 years done. And maybe council could enlighten us on what priorities are. Because somebody's going to have to prioritize what's in this comp plan. Because there's no way in the world that he's going to be able to do what they are suggesting they will do.
Yeah.
We don't have the money to do it. We don't have the staff to do it. And we don't have the resources, you know, in, in, in the neighborhood to do it.
And on the other side of it is you never know what opportunity is going to pop up in 20 years. So being able to be prepared, you know.
Nothing wrong with preparation, but we should be aware of where the conflicts are.
Oh, absolutely.
And not to sound obtuse, and obviously, we've been taking notes and listening, but I think it's better identified from your position than from us. Would you, can you identify those points of conflict in your mind, even just have, rolling through what we've gone through? We, there was one identified tonight.
We brought up housing, trees.
Housing and trees.
You, you want to increase density. The ADUs have been legal in Olympia for four years. They've been legal in Tomwater for two years. And I can probably count on one hand the number of ADUs that have actually been built. In other words, just, just, just making it's possible to increase density does not make it happen. So there's, there's, there's another example. And it's not just ADUs, it's triplexes, duplexes, the nine yards. Although we've had a nice trip and we saw some examples of that being done. It's minuscule compared to what's needed to meet this upcoming huge population that.
It's over 20 years, so we're ending for 20 years out. So hopefully, we don't get 17,000 people within one year. Hopefully, the market can keep up.
But yeah, these are great, great points and great questions. And I think that would be very interesting conversation.
It'd be interesting because I think, you know, there's outgoing council members, people who are not rerun. So, yeah, to get some of their, you know, history or whatever they, they, some of their, their legacy. They might want to carry on, you know. But being open to whoever, you know, we won't know at our joint meeting, at this November one. But, you know, people incoming, and they're likely to have some thoughts too.
Yeah. So what about language? Just throwing that out there.
Do you mean?
For our goals and policies.
Should they be in Spanish, for example? Is that what you're asking?
No, I'm talking about must, shall, like when we say we're going to do something.
Didn't we have a nice little glossary in one of our visions?
Yeah.
Each chapter has that.
But if we got to council, from what I've heard so far this evening about completing interest, what, what their vision is and what their priorities would be for them and what I'm going to see.
I just think it would, it would be interesting to see, yeah, just more of their perspective. Yeah. I guess I shouldn't have said language, but.
It's more like, what did they discuss as a retreat? What are the priorities?
Oh, what is the horizon? Like, what are they claiming for that horizon?
Yeah, and I want to be careful that I don't want, you know, to trample on their, on their prerogative to have a retreat. It's, you know, their own thing. So I'm not looking for, you know, detailed notes to that, but just, you know, kind of their, their general thinking and what they arrived at collectively for their strategic plan.
And maybe how.
That kind of thing. I'm not looking for anything that's confidential.
I can, I might be able to help a little bit with that. I was just with the council and they were discussing the third or fourth meeting on the strategic planning side. They're keeping really high level in their planning. So for example, today, they focused on community. What makes a good community thing? So affordable housing was one of the things that fell under that, as well as, you know, equity and a few other things. But the level of their conversation was very much of the same as the level that we were having here in terms of both what their expectations were and their understanding of the issues and that kind of thing. So I'm not as concerned that there's going to be a big disconnect between what the commission has been talking about and what the council's been talking about. But I guess I would be more interested in making sure that because we have such limited time now and we've all been talking about the elements for the past two years, what should we really be honing in on as this final push? And as, you know, obviously, the implementation side is probably a good thing to start with. But that would be my, my question.
I think that's sort of like what Mr. Patrick was talking about. To summarize or maybe put words in your mouth, it's like, we're not going to meet that 17,000 new residents goal by having 30 years. Even over 20 years.
I think it was like 9,000 units, but the population.
Okay. You know, great for the ADUs, your point that, you know, just because we, we make it allowable doesn't instantly create it. And if the focus isn't on something that's going to have a bigger bang, it's probably not going to hit our goal.
Another thing to keep in mind is, starting with the discussions with the commission and the council in 18th about what to do about affordable housing and homelessness, there was never one thing that was going to do it. It was always, here's a whole slew of things we should probably consider doing. And then hopefully, together, all these things may help us towards that. And I guess that's really still the mechanism going.
Yeah, I don't think anybody's questioning, we need the whole suite. It's just, you know, I mean, we spend a lot of time talking on the, kind of the smaller and the producing thing we need. Large quantities of housing, the things that don't produce much and they're taking a lot of time.
Potentially.
The things versus the things that, you know, have a bigger bang.
Erica, what I, what I suggested, is that a repeat of what you've already done with the city council? Because I wouldn't want you to do that. It's a repeat.
I had summarized what we heard and how we incorporated it throughout the two years as far as our plan, our goal, policy, and the action items. I have not had that present, I have not shared that presentation with you all. There was a suggestion. Yeah, so we were talking for question number one for the comprehensive plan. Most important thing, do you like staff to guide on our discussions? And we're saying, the key areas where there's been significant change or where we've changed our updated policy or changed or updated our policies based on public feedback, how it was incorporated into the elements. That's about right?
Yeah, I mean, from the presentation you gave as to what the final product is, what, what changed in there that would be considered significant. But if you've already shared that with the council, that would not be a good use of time in our joint meeting.
That was just on housing though.
So we are talking about the full adoption for all the elements.
All right, okay.
And everything. So this is going to be a bigger discussion versus just one element. So I do believe we've also been, I think, we talked about climate. I think climate.
Climate, climate was discussed with the council as well.
Yeah, so we, we've done that a little bit, but there's still transportation. There's still proposed purposes, facilities. We have the conservation. I'm missing any other ones. We didn't work on the parks and rec plan. We didn't do, oh, land use, of course, land use. So there's, yeah, I still think that's relevant and it would be nice to get.
Just stay kind of at that, that what's really significant would be.
Can you review for us how the review of our progress on this is going to take place? Is that something we need to worry about now as we consider all the elements? Whether we, do we have a report in 10 years? Or when, when is it that we have to report back to the Department of Commerce on how we have achieved or approached our actions?
For housing, it's on the five-year cycle.
And climate as well?
Climate as well. I think whatever the state.
Twenty, thirty?
To be honest, whatever the state requirement is what the state requirement will be or will be setting up what they do the next session, it's probably what the report out to city and commission and so forth of how we're doing is going to be more timely and important, in my mind. Said we're going to do this, how are we doing? It's probably something you'll be paying attention to more than the state requirements of 200-plus plans and reports and then trying to figure out.
Is there a process to be developed that where we will accumulate that data?
Actually, that might not be a bad topic for discussion.
That's what I was.
Use the opportunity to talk about implementation and then reporting.
Monitoring that progress.
Yep, that's.
Let the expect.
I didn't get the word right.
First of all, determining what your expectations are with the council as well. And the best mechanisms for that.
Yeah, I think in our goal policies and actions, originally, we had identified lead and we tried to do time frame. But through provisions and further discussion, we removed, did we remove those from the goal policies and actions? No.
No, for the most part, we left those intact.
Okay.
So we have at least a starting point.
Yeah, okay, but then it's like, what does that actually look like? Like, how, how could we do that? What would work, what works best? Okay, yeah.
Now that you're here.
Hi.
I did want to skip back just a little bit. We had a good discussion about CFP.
Okay.
And their review of the CFP and a suggestion that was made was that, and that has been done in the past, is that there have been work sessions with directors separate from, is that going to be possible?
No. The reason, I understand where you're coming from and that's a thing we have done in the past. We're still actually getting the draft of the CFP poll together.
That's what I'm concerned about.
That's what I'm.
Is that we're going to get.
I have my own.
We're going to get, we're going to get handed at the last minute a half-done product. And, and I don't see how we can do what I think are the expectations of the city council as a planning commission to review that.
I'm not, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you on that. But I do know at the moment that we have an incomplete CFP and we're going to Public Works Committee with something on the 18th. So that version is probably, but you're going to see at your briefing.
Can we make these dates later?
It's going to be challenging.
For, I mean, for planning commission review and hearing for the CFP, is it critical that it be as early as it is?
I, the reason that the schedule's laid out in this particular way is try to ensure that the CFP was in place at the beginning of 26th. Because it's guides the funding.
We just don't tell them. It's changing the dates.
I know. Issue is if we change the dates, then we.
And we move everything.
And we, we're kind of hitting every session, work session the way it is.
If we wanted clarification soon, the November 24th, Joint City Council Planning Commission Work Session.
Be a Monday. Is that intentional? Is that a Monday?
Oh, yeah, it should, it should be the 25th. And I apologize, the.
Right here.
We have late, we have the Veterans Day falling on a Tuesday. So they shifted the year planning commission meeting to the Monday of that week, which is the 10th, and I just added 14.
Oh.
So there is a Monday in there.
Yeah.
So we are going to meet on a Monday.
When?
The 10th.
The Monday, the 10th. No, but the 24th is.
The 24th, that should be the 25th.
We were focused on the wrong date.
Yeah, but I appreciate you focusing on the 24th.
So we are a meeting on November 10th.
We're proposing to meet on.
I didn't question that one.
There we go.
I appreciate you going immediately to the joint meeting.
Apparently, they moved the holiday to the Monday.
Well, the 24th is actually the 20th.
Well, not according to the official state, the city calendar, which is what I'm looking at at the moment.
They're holding it on the actual harvest estate.
Well, that, that's, that is the date that we are.
Okay, curious. So well, as we get closer to the, to November, let's just keep revisiting what the dates of the meetings are.
Yeah, no, this will be, I mean, the 24th is incorrect. That should be the 25th. What, what I would like to just ask the question is, aside from the CFP dates, which, you know, we might be stuck with, the planning commission, the, the, the update and the development code meetings, we're already past the deadline. But we could be potentially a little bit more flexible with that if we either A, don't think we need all the meetings or all the two work sessions, or we could add additional time if we think we need it. But I guess that's, I'm trying to get a sense from your discussions to date on the plan and all the things that you know about it. Do you think this is too much?
Is there a way with the development code update, I don't know if they've done it from a patch where we've done a briefing. We already did a briefing, right, on the development code? And so is the next one a work session? I didn't want to.
We, we could, I mean, we could label it as a work session. You're looking at the CFP schedule, but.
Like you said, development code, that's in January.
Oh, yeah, this is development code, but not.
Development code is in January.
Yeah, we.
So can we maybe have it as a briefing, but turn it into a work session?
Yeah, I don't think that's an issue. It's not a, again, our typical process, we'd be introducing something for the first time at a briefing. And that's where we start with. We're essentially introducing the ordinance itself for the first time. But the contents of the ordinance, you should be familiar with from past discussions. So effectively, it could be a work session.
The unit subdivision, the two units per lot, the ADU requirement, the condos, the middle housing. So we discussed that. We got really good feedback from the all at our last briefing. So that, so that might be something to consider. I could present to you all of the actual development code language and we could then decide.
Yeah, I think, you know, that, for the effective use of time and everything, we don't need to, I would be fine with that. The only reason that these two have been conflated is the, the state. The only reason that these two have been conflated is the, the state requires us to finish it faster than we anticipated. And just judging by some of the recent self-management hearings board decisions, they've had issues when the code isn't ready when the plan's ready. So another reason we're trying to-
Synchronize them?
Synchronize them?
Yeah. For some reason, they had an issue with the development code is following and isn't there yet.
I was kind of wondering back on the capital facilities plan though and when this got come up. Are there parts of the capital facilities plan that are available for review already?
Yep, yep. No, there will be enough to talk about.
We can, and-
We can get that early.
Not at, not at this particular meeting. It is 8:30 and I really don't feel like going back to the office and getting the copy.
No, no, I don't want to break this instance, but I mean, you know-
We, we would be prepared to discuss in some level of detail on the 23rd.
Well, I think the point is, I think that Mr. Patrick is making is that-
Presentation on the 20th is one thing, but we're requesting more time to review the materials down to the goal.
Yeah, no, and I think, thank you for that. Do we have anything else scheduled from the 23rd?
The just that public hearing.
Public hearing for the pursuit.
Yeah, we got a public hearing on top of that.
Yeah.
So, you know, I could turn around what I've got right now this week and have it ready.
We could, we could be reading ahead. That would, that would, that would help.
No, I, I, there's no reason for us to, oh, public notice, we got to get it.
Public notice for the public hearing.
For the public hearing.
But I don't anticipate the public hearing is going to take very long.
No.
It may not, but-
No, but it, it, yeah. So yes to the idea of getting out the packets earlier.
Okay, or, or at least, you know, some goodly portion of the draft, whatever we have now, ready.
Yep. No, I, I could put something together and if we can with the food system plan stuff, try to get that out Thursday or Friday this week.
Oh, got you. Just to prepare the entire packet early. That's why you're looking at me.
Yeah, super. And then, yeah, we got sufficient time, particularly if you can sign on the capital facilities, I'm sure it's complex and there's a lot to dig into.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, I was going to ask a question. If on October 14th at the work session, we decide we're not ready for a public hearing, what happens then? So we could postpone the public hearing and that wouldn't impact staff because they'd be working on the schedule and we would be changing the schedule after the fact.
I don't expect any of the council's review schedule if we do that. But I mean, if, if, if we don't get finished with our briefing and discussion on the 23rd of the capital facilities, we may still have to have more of it on the 14th, October 14th.
Well, the whole thing is going to be on the 14th. Oh, we're going to get a briefing on the 13th on top of a public hearing. There's not, unless you go over the two-hour-
Yeah.
-limit, which is fine with me.
By the way, your rules say 9:30.
You keep bringing that up, Brad.
To jazz.
Such an unpopular thing. It goes right through. Yeah, I'd rather start at 6:30 than go to 9:30.
Oh, I like that, three hours. We can do three hours.
No, no, no.
Whatever, okay.
All right, so-
Almost three hours now, so this is-
You'll be here for like 45 minutes with us, though. We missed it.
We missed it. We haven't even got to your-
But you had, you had far more qualified people here.
I, I'm, I guess I'm still not sure we've maybe satisfied the request. We can get some early materials, maybe even a full packet for the 13th. Get it later this week. But we're still kind of concerned that we, we may not get all the way through the briefing itself on the 13th. It might need a little while.
It depends on what we really want to focus. Again, there's so many different projects that are on the CFP. We're not going to be able to run through everyone. This is also common when we've done CFPs in the past. So we could focus on ones that are of importance to you as you go through the materials. That might be the better way to do it.
Well, I'd like to compare it to the 20-year plan that we were already putting in the transportation element. See if, to see if they've got the same projects. I mean, it, it would be, it'd be hopeful, it'd be hopeful, hopeful that, that there's, there's some compatibility between the two.
Right, and also, you know, keeping in mind that the six-year plan is just a fraction of the 20-year project, so.
Well, in the six-year, it never changes. You know, that's, that's always five years out.
Well, I'm just hoping that is prioritized, that we know what the fire department is doing as their top priority in facilities with the police department. You guys, this, I'm brand new to this, so I don't know what all of the departments are.
Yeah, so one thing that-
But there's always the wish list, but what are you really aiming for in the next couple of years? What's, what, where's the first roundabout going to be? Starting, you know?
They've got a shovel-
How you doing this?
Started at Henderson and 93rd. I think we should, we could be able to talk about it.
Okay. Yeah.
Um, okay, sounds like we have some playing about your, do, do, does the commission want to entertain the notion of starting early on the 20th? Do you need a motion to intervene?
I, I don't think that's necessary, nothing.
Do you just care?
And I propose we send up the packet and then wait for feedback?
Packet will have the agenda which sets the time. So my, my preference would be to keep the circuit clock started.
Okay.
Because you should look at what it is first before we decide if we need additional time.
Should we perhaps note, I think the only one that's missing is Daniels, is that we might be going till 9:30 that night?
It might just go long, yeah. I, that's, that's always the case.
Brad might be as wish.
All right.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Okay, um, all right, well, we'll, we'll keep our seven o'clock time for the 23rd. We may, we may or we may not go long. It's always the case that we, if we need to go a little bit more. Okay. Um, any other discussion? Yes, yeah.
Yes, sir.
I, I would personally like a little clarification. We started to talk about the comprehensive plan and development code update. And we were kind of around this side and we talked about the briefing and the work session and joining the two, but I just would like to be more clear about what, does that mean we don't need a work session on November 10th? Does that mean the rest of this shifts up?
No, I think, I-
Okay.
The question, of course, will be, once we actually, you have the full packet and everything together and you see all of the code changes together in the actual code language that's proposed, at that time, you can decide whether or not you need additional time or you don't need the work session on the 10th. So that, why don't we make that decision at that meeting?
Yeah, we've done this before. I forget what update we did.
What, my, my concern is not some, I obviously would like less meetings, but I just don't want to assume that everybody's fine with a shorter meeting schedule, so.
Also, let me ask you this because we'll proceed through what in our rules procedures say though, is it remembered that we elect-
First meeting-
So that would be-
So that could be, you could potentially have a new chair and a chair, a vice chair.
That's right.
Who could also at that meeting decide to reopen the whole rules of procedure for the planning commission and revisit the stay late until 9:30 before needing a vote.
We could. But, okay, so-
Sorry, I jumped.
At our first meeting in November, if we don't have November 10th, we'll, would be the second meeting in December. And if we don't have either, it'll be December.
Yeah, I think the concern is because they go to the council in January, right?
We will certainly have the 25th meeting.
Yeah.
I don't think that's in question because it's also a joint planning-
Yeah.
-night, a, a joint meeting night and-
Right, yeah.
I don't know that we'll run into the risk of not having a meeting in November.
Yeah, the proposal is to get rid of, cancel them. It's just if everyone is okay with the proposed update, the code development update to-
Backfill them?
Just no, at the, at our briefing, because we've been breached on the development update.
It's a question of how comfortable you are with what we're, what's being proposed in the final document.
Yeah.
And then making a decision if you need it, you need the additional time to talk about it or you don't.
Yeah.
So either way works for us, we'll be here.
Um, so our joint meeting usually starts a little-
Six o'clock.
Six, okay. We need to now, we need to go our separate ways and have our own date.
And then keep in mind that December 9th will also be, there'll be a brief joint meeting ahead of time to talk about your '26 work program.
On what day?
On what day?
December 9th?
Oh, December 9th, okay.
Another joint, also have January 13th, please?
Yep, and the question, and we'll be asking the general government, one joint work session is sufficient or they prefer two?
I'll be going to the first one, so.
No, here.
You only need one person?
Twenty, yeah. I'll be on why I'm sorry.
Okay.
All right, you can, okay.
All right.
I'll be going December 9th. Question.
Yes.
SEPA. I, I remember the state has waived SEPA, the state SEPA for the comp plans, right? They haven't?
No, I would love that.
Well, then, then how can we assume that we're going to declare non-significance?
We are, we're going to go through the SEPA review process with the assumption that we're going to be issuing a determination on significance. Any member of public-
We hope the thing is very significant.
Yeah, but and-
Non-significance.
And what, what it essentially is saying that is that we have done sufficient environmental review before as be part of the process and funding process, so we're building on the existing plan and that kind of thing. So that's really the approach we're taking here. So it will really be up to either a member of the community or an agency to challenge that decision, say, no, we need something more. But from my standpoint and from the standpoint of how we've been evaluating all this throughout, doing an EIS in addition to all the work we've been doing is kind of wasteful. I don't think necessarily it gives us any more information than we already had and just spends a lot of money, a lot of time on paper.
Is that for the, the SEPA review of the development code or for the CFP?
So that was just the climate plan that they waived SEPA on?
It was a really strange legislature. Certain parts of the housing things were waived if you did it by a certain time. Certain things of the climate were waived. I can't remember if it was by-
But not overall? Okay, I misread it.
Not over, which is kind of dumb because, and so you've got SEPA exempt things that are going to, in my mind, bigger things and then the things, the quote-unquote, normal stuff, you could appeal to.
It is hard to think of having a climate plan with no environmental significance.
No environmental impact, yeah, yeah. Generally, I guess, looking to have the SEPA reviews about adverse impact rather than, I guess, you know, ameliorative impact. I don't think you have to report on or do a study if it's going to do some good. There we go. Are we more or less square on, on what we're doing?
So we're getting your homework by the end of the week.
All right.
Dana and Erica will be calling each of you individually. Make sure that you've opened the files and started reading it by Monday.
I think it's a way to check to see if we opened the files.
We did, Brad, I'm going to just say we've concluded on item nine. We did not have a director's report. I don't know if you want to say any more of it. All right, then, it looks like our next meeting will be September 23rd where we do expect to have our public hearing on the food system plan and briefing on the capital facilities plan and-
So there was no discussion about the minutes, the three or four sets of minutes?
We had two missing ones and, and we did approve the November 12th.
Two more are coming for your next meeting.
Okay. Any other discussion? I am going to say that we've concluded our business tonight, so we can adjourn.
Thank you.
Did you call the recording? Sorry, did you get a call of the time for the-
Oh, it is a order denied.
Good night, thank you. See you tonight, Brad.
Everyone, thank you.
Not all, no.